Second ward, half of the first ward. I know Commissioner Gilbert is going to be joining us, so we'll go ahead and get started here. There is actually Commissioner Gilbert coming in. And Laura, welcome. I'll get to you in just a second here. And there you go, Steve, you got everything. So I'll go ahead and open our committee, the whole meeting for 6:30. Get started here. So, so real quick, last, late last week, we had a Grand Valley Metro Council, a board meeting, and we were Zoom bombed, and we were Zoom bombed unfortunately very, very aggressively. So just to want the group to be prepared, I think we're in a great spot with Jason around, but I'm not doing my job either. I've not experienced that wonderful event and not shared with everybody. That we just need to be on our toes and if we need to go into a quick meeting adjournment, and at that point, we'll do just that and get our house in order and all of that. So again, just over precautionary measures, but as we get our meeting started here, Laura, it's good to see you again. I think I saw you last year right before COVID started. I believe it might have been at the Grand Rapids State of the City event or some event. I know it was up for Grand Rapids and we got to meet each other. So I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you. I know you wanted to give a quick background. So I'll tee this up for you and let you have the floor.
So go ahead and start the presentation.
You may go right ahead. And I should, Jason, I should have given you a heads up there that Laura will have a couple of slides to show here, so if we can allow her to be the presenter.
Yep, shouldn't be a problem.
They have a seven o'clock, seven o'clock meeting, so we're going to try and squeeze both of these out for that.
Yeah, Laura kind of overbooked us. It's her, it's my fault completely, unfortunately. So thank you all very, very much for allowing us to present tonight. We're going to be talking with you, myself, Valerie Lefler from Phoenix Mobility Rising, as well as Paul Ryan from the Veterans, West Michigan Veterans Coalition. We're going to talk with you briefly about a pilot that we're doing for specifically for veterans in Kent County. And again, it's brought to you in addition Kent County's Veteran Services. So it's the four agencies that are working on this. And some of you know what Disability Advocates does, some of you do not. Our mission at Disability Advocates is to work alongside people with disabilities who seek to lead self-directed lives and advocate for accessible and welcoming communities. And of course, we were established back in 1981. We are what they call a SIL, which is a National Association of Center for Independent Living. There are 15 SLS in Michigan, and of course, we are one of them. We are kind of all together in a group with Disability Network Michigans, or they're like the head of all 15 SLS in the state, and we are who we serve. So our board members and our staff, at least 51% of both would be considered somebody with a disability. Current community activities, we have a, a group that meets out of our office when we're not in COVID called Concerned Citizens for Improved Transportation. And this is mostly people are disabled. But we do have members from the Rapid, Ride Link, as well as ENTF that are all part of this group. And it's not just for people with disabilities. It is improved transportation for everybody. So we're looking at not just people with disabilities. Again, you're looking at the people that can't get around otherwise. Of course, we, Dave and I are both members of the Essential Needs Task Force Subcommittee, Transportation Subcommittee, and we partner a lot with the Rapid and definitely Go Bus. We have done a couple of different projects with them this past year. You may remember Rapid On Demand as well as Go Bus Plus. And I will turn this over to Paul.
Good evening, everybody, and thanks very much for allowing us to speak. My name is Paul Ryan, and I'm a representative for the West Michigan Veterans Coalition. The coalition itself goes back to about 2009. We were known by a different name then. The Greater Grand Rapids Veteran Services Forum changed our name to the West Michigan Veterans Coalition in 2013 to more accurately reflect our footprint, which is a 13-county area that includes Kent County and the surrounding county. We are a 501(c)(3) organization. Our collaboration among a variety of groups, veteran service organizations, other nonprofits, academia, and the private sector to assist veterans in improving their lives in those areas of healthcare, education, employment, and quality of life. This slide that's up now shows a little bit of detail about what some of those activities are. Our newest project is this transportation project in partnership with Disability Advocates, Phoenix Mobility Rising, and Kent County Veteran Services. And Valerie is going to speak to you a little bit about that.
Always helps to be unmuted. So good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity. So thank you, Laura and Paul, for, for the introduction and seeing us here. So Phoenix is a small 501(c)(3) that started about three years ago. We work all over the U.S. with major partners, including Toyota North America, AARP Driver Safety. We work with insurance companies in particular, but we wanted to do something specifically focused on veterans. It's a huge initiative where we know there's major need for transportation. And currently, we have several different projects in Michigan, two of them funded by the Michigan Governor's Mobility Challenge Project. And then we just launched a program in, out of a grant in Detroit focusing on access to jobs, healthcare, and healthy food with Henry Ford Hospital, Sinai Grace Hospital, just a variety of different partners, but none of that's veterans-focused. And so we actually launched a national search to work with partners that had the right momentum, the right mission, and, and really the right focus on making a difference and in supporting veterans in quality of life. And so we're excited to be a partner on this project. We did launch and start providing rides in, on December 11th. And we now have multiple volunteers providing rides in Kent County to veterans or veterans' family members and supporting access to medical care and employment.
This slide says buy the numbers, but there's only one number on it, and that's the one that we know. Approximately 33,000 veterans reside in Kent County alone. How many of those veterans report transportation access as an issue in their lives? And how many of those trips go unmet? The answer is, we really don't know. That's what the pilot project is intended to find out. Next slide, please. This is what we do know. There are gaps in service with respect to these different factors. When transportation is available, day, times of the day and days of the week, there are service area limitations where a military-connected person can originate a transportation and where they can arrive with their destination is. There are sometimes very long wait times for transportation availability. There have been, with respect to military-connected people, eligibility barriers. The VA, for example, only the veteran him or herself can travel for medical care. What about the spouse of that veteran? What about the caregiver for that veteran? That has been an obstacle. The purpose for transportation, only for medical appointments, for example. There's a cost factor in many of the transportation services that are currently available to veterans. We designed this project to break down those barriers. We have no limitation on origin within Kent County. Rides can be, can end at their destination anywhere in Kent, Ottawa, Ionia, or Muskegon Counties. They are free of charge, and they can be for really any reason. Next slide.
And so kind of how this idea came about, one of the challenges that we know with transportation services is cost is a factor. And so volunteer transportation, you know, really seemed to be the, the most affordable, cost-effective option. They are reimbursed mileage. And we know that many times also relationships are built with those volunteer transportation drivers. I mean, literally right before this conversation, I was on the phone with one of our volunteers supporting, you know, we're helping him get to work, but he needs support with housing. And how do we go about coming along to support him in that journey? And so I think that the idea really genesis around nationally, this is an issue. And, you know, really wanted to make sure that we created a resource that was sustainable, but also was going to create those relationships. Most of our volunteers are also veterans. And so the minute that that person gets in the car, they have that identifying component. You know, what branch are you in? Where did you serve? Were you deployed overseas? Those kind of things. And Grand Rapids was selected because of the incredible work that the West Michigan Veterans Coalition and Disability Advocates of Kent County. The amount of momentum and collaboration in this community is unparalleled across the U.S. And so we were just incredibly honored to be able to, to launch this program here together. We've kind of done a lot of advertising through Facebook, through community partnerships. We are actively looking for volunteers to continue to expand the program because employment transportation is a very heavy lift for volunteers. That's five days a week, sometimes even third shift. And so just volunteers is always a need as we grow the volunteer base to support the demand in rides. In addition, everybody loves COVID measures, but I just wanted to throw this out there that we do provide the volunteers with PPE and then provide them with a stipend in order to be able to wipe down the vehicle in between drivers, and we ask COVID screening questions. All right. So Paul, do you want to take the slider? Oh, I think you're on mute, Paul.
I was on mute. Thank you. Who is eligible? The veteran him or herself, any family member in the household, and the veteran caregiver. So often with medical appointments and sometimes traveling longer distances, the veteran himself, it's not always the best outcome to, to go alone. So having a spouse or family member or a caregiver or company is really important. Reasons for travel can really be anything. We have prioritized reasons for trips. Medical appointments tend to be a higher priority than grocery shopping. But there are other things too, social, social travel. If, if someone simply wants to go for a ride, if we have driver availability, we'll, we'll provide that. Where can I go as a rider? I mentioned that earlier. Any desk, any origin in Kent County is, is okay. Any destination within Kent, Ottawa, Ionia, and Muskegon Counties are okay. Hours available for travel. As Valerie had pointed out, we are continuing to recruit for volunteer drivers to expand the hours for access. That's typically daytime, Monday through Friday, although we do have recently rider that does work third shift, and we've been able to secure driver availability for that. That availability obviously will go up as the driver pool expands. How do we schedule a ride? I believe that Laura has got some information on a subsequent slide that will address that.
That I do. Thank you very much. We have a veterans apprentice named David Alex, and he is actually the one that schedules the rides. And the last slide I show you is going to have the phone number in order to contact him. But he does take phone calls. I believe it's between 10 a.m. and 2 p.m. in order to schedule rides, and I believe they're at least 24 hours in advance. Okay. He is a veteran himself. He is a veterans apprentice through Disability Advocates. So he joined to potentially become a candidate for Evoque Rehab. He's finished his bachelor, his BA in intelligence analysis, and he has a minor in space studies. And he said, for fun, he's a master luthier, which he had to explain to me, which basically means he makes instruments. And you can see in the picture, he's, I don't know what he's making, maybe a guitar or something. And then Sandra is another one of our veteran apprentices. She was the first rider that we had. And I asked her for a quote a while back, and she said that she really likes the ride program. The driver that she has is extremely dependable, and he even opens the door for her. So he treats her like a lady instead of just a passenger, and she thought that was pretty cool. So again, if you want to reach David, this is his phone number. It's 616-600-6834. Again, it's from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And then if you're looking to possibly volunteer as a driver, you know, they're always looking for more, of course. This is the web address, and if you want, I can go ahead and put this information in the chat so that at least you have it, because you won't have the slideshow, but at least you can have this particular information if you would like to have it. Do you have any questions for any of us?
Commissioners, any comments, questions, or even managers?
How, how long has this program been going on?
It started December 11th. It is scheduled to run until at least, I think it's March 11th. But part of why we're here is to get verbal-written support, not necessarily financial support from all of you, but some sort of support letter that we can show to funders, different grant applications to include saying, look, City of Walker thinks this is a really great program, and they're supporting it at least verbally and as a way of securing more funding to keep it going in the future.
Yeah, we're, we're hopeful that the, the greater number of communities in West Michigan that support us in the manner that Laura described makes it the, the opportunity for sustaining financial support to keep the program going beyond March 11th and to expand it to a greater availability in terms of times of day and days of the week goes up. I would, I would also remind the members that, about the strength of the City of Walker, the Walker community and supporting veterans. You may recall back in 2011, Walker was selected as the site for one of the very few Army-strong community centers in the country. There were only six of them in the country, and Walker was selected for that site. It operated for a couple of years, and unfortunately, because of budget cuts in Washington, that was eliminated. But Walker has a great track record in supporting veterans, and we're hopeful that you will see fit to support us in this endeavor.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Are you able to share the, the slideshow with us? Can you, can you send that to the clerk or something?
Yes, I'd be, is that all right with you, Valerie and Paul?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I will be happy.
I'm happy to do that. Sure.
Okay, great.
Hey, and Laura, to help in your efforts, I mean, itself on my to-do list here from tonight is I'll connect you with our communications manager for the city and help with a little bit of social media backing on this. We've worked with Disability Advocates for a number of years, obviously, and this is just another, another, I guess, arrow of the quiver for us to help our community, particularly our veterans. And I, and I would, I'm not sure Commissioner Groder's members are not at a conversation. I think you, Commissioner Heisinger, we had a resident in the third ward. I know the managers do. Gentleman that was walking, a longtime veteran that for some medical reasons was not able to drive anymore. It was walking from his place over by Lincoln Golf Course into Standale. And we helped facilitate through the Veteran Services, help arrangements. This is one of these situations where that would be a perfect fit for him. And actually, I've got that as a follow-up as well to see how he's doing and see if there's still those services, which I'd imagine there is. This would fall right in that, in that bucket. So yeah, so Laura, if you want to send to clerk and myself, and then I'll let the clerk disseminate to the commissioners. I'll work on the social media manager tomorrow and get some messaging to help you out with that.
Sounds great.
Thank you so much.
All right, commissioners, any other comments, questions?
If I may?
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yep, so I'm just curious. I, maybe you mentioned this, but I think I missed it. How many have you been able to, to serve so far throughout the pilot?
So starting in December, I think there's been a total of seven individuals that we have supported, and we have six volunteers. So like I said, we've just, with COVID and the holiday break, are really getting our wind, but we're, we're looking to scale this because we know there's, I think we've done some surveys with some of the employers in the region. And Paul, do you want to share that information?
Yes, we, we started a survey. We're continuing it. And one of the interesting comments came back from one of the major employers in the area was actually Spartan Nash. And the respondent told us that between 10 and 15 prospective employees per month are basically turned away, if you will, because they don't have transportation to get to work. I've got to believe personally that there are other employers that find themselves in a similar situation where they have prospective employees that are in other ways qualified for the jobs available, but simply can't take them because they can't get to work.
Right, yeah, I get, this seems like a really great, you know, measure to, to bridge that gap. Did you also say at the beginning that your focus is on veterans, but you're looking? I guess, can you clarify the focus for me? Is it prioritize disabled folks or veterans or both? Or I thought you said maybe people who didn't have disabilities would be included. Just can you clarify that?
So it's any veteran or service-connected family member. So for example, there's a passenger that we're taking to medical appointments, and her husband was active military, and, and he passed away. And now she's still receiving support in getting to her healthcare appointments. And so it can be the service member or an immediate family member. Paul or Laura, do you guys want to clarify on that?
Yeah.
But your purpose is broad.
That, that's exactly right. And our eligibility criteria for who can take a ride is, is, is pretty broad. And that's in keeping with the mission of the West Michigan Veterans Coalition. It's military-connected people currently serving prior veterans or retirees and family members. We tend to be inclusive rather than exclusive, and this transportation program reflects that.
Great, thanks so much.
Thank you. I have one, one last question. What is the mile, the radius that you go? I might have missed that, but how far out do you go to pick people up? What's the limits?
Anywhere.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, anywhere in Kent County, we can pick up somebody anywhere in Kent County, and we can take them to anywhere in Kent County or Ionia, Ottawa, or Muskegon. Now, some of those longer trips may be subject to driver availability, but that's, those are the parameters.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And something that wasn't mentioned is if you wanted to volunteer as a driver, they are paid the government reimbursement rate of 14 cents a mile for volunteer drivers. So if you, again, if you know of anybody, they get gas money is really what it comes down to, but at least it's something.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else?
Have a question.
Yes.
Do they use their own vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're good then, Laura. So Laura, if you can help with us tomorrow, just send the slide deck to the clerk and myself, and then we'll, I'll get you a, she'll do her path communicating that out, and then I'll get you spread away to Communications.
That sounds great.
Help out. And Captain Ryan, it took me a minute. I'm a little slow on the draw tonight. We met right before COVID. You came and presented an award. I, I work at an insurance place down in the portage, I-84 in Westenge.
Oh, yeah.
Award of the Garrett Reserve Award, and Lindsay had put us up for it. So I remember you and I meeting in the office right, I think right before COVID hit, so.
Thank you, sir. That was, happened to be the very last Patriot Award that we were able to present in person. It's all virtual now.
Yeah, I remember you coming in. It was awkward that not many people were in the building at that point, so it's all good. So good to see you again. And Laura, Valerie, and Captain Ryan, thank you very, very much for your time this evening. We'll let you jump to your seven o'clock, and we'll get some conversations started behind the scenes then.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, everybody.
Yep, thank you. All right, next on the list, Travis, I'm gonna, if you're able to sit tight, we'll probably, I'm just within five minutes to go here. We will, let's see, what else? Really don't want to get into the ordinances or anything. Maybe for the managers, and if we can, we'll get to the clerk. But managers have opened any comment, open mic time for, for you. Frank, we'll go ahead and start with you if that works.
Well, if you want, I can quick cover the, well, first of all, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
If you'd like, I could cover that light fixture change on Kenny. That's pretty quick.
Yeah, that'll help. Thank you.
Okay. You folks have seen many of these over the past few years. Consumers are switching out the, the streetlights that are strung over the center of streets with light poles. So what you have in front of you is the next one in that, that changeout process. The address is 2497 Kenny, which is essentially across the street from Phase Two of Meadow Springs condos. And what they're doing there in coordination with engineering in the Kenny Avenue Road project is they're going to take out the center strand light that stretches over the road and put in a 54-watt LED pole fixture. So it's pretty simple. That's about it. It is being coordinated with engineering just to make sure that all of the, the pieces fit as the road is being reconstructed. And that's it on that one. Technically, what it is, is it's an amendment to your contract with Consumers Energy, and then there's a resolution in there as well. And if, if you guys approve this tonight, then Sarah will take this and move it forward to Consumers Energy, just like we've done in the past. And then they will make the changes consistent with the road project.
I believe we're going to see probably quite a few more of these in the, the coming years here. Those old sodium vapor lights. Good, thank you. Darryl? I think we've got time. If not, we'll keep rolling into some, that's fine.
Nope, good evening. One other resolution we have on here that maybe we can do real quick. It's our annual striking of the delinquent property tax list, Resolution 590. I don't know if there's any questions on that. That comes to you from Dan DeBries every year about this time. And these are over five years delinquent and not worth pursuing. Most of these companies are, have left town, and this just strikes them from the rolls. I don't know if there's any questions on that resolution or not. The list keeps getting smaller every year, thank goodness.
All right, I think we're good there then.
Okay. You want me to keep going? Will I have a minute or so?
Yeah, you have time. We're good.
Okay, just wanted to thank the Finance Committee this morning. We met, talking about the first draft of the budget and some budget amendments. So that's been consuming a lot of my time the, the past week. Just to comment on that, we continue to move forward with that. And just kudos again to our DPW. I'm sure you all have comments on that at the end of the meeting. But phenomenal job over the last several days with the snow and ice management. So good job to those guys as well. It's really all I have.
Yeah, amen to that. Definitely one of the shining highlights of the week here. You can tell when you leave the city limits. Not picking anyone, municipality, just you see the difference. So. All right, 6:59. Let's give it about 30 more seconds here. We'll get started with our meeting in just a moment here. So if you need a quick beverage refill or otherwise, you've got a quick one here. All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order here. Regular city commission meeting. All right, it is seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order here, regular City Commission meeting. Jason, I'll just double check real quick before we get started here, and I'll ask a few times, anybody in the waiting room to come in?
Nope.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Commissioner Glanville for the invocation.
All right, thanks, everybody. Welcome for this evening's invocation in honor of Black History Month. I thought it would be interesting and appropriate to read the poem called Lift Every Voice and Sing. You might recognize the name of that poem as also being known as the Black National Anthem. For a little background on that, it was written by James Walden Johnson, one of the early NAACP leaders. He was also an educator, a diplomat. He was stationed under, he was appointed under President Roosevelt to serve as a U.S. Consul in Venezuela and Nicaragua for a good period of time. He was a professor at New York University. So a lot going on there, lawyer, educator, et cetera. So again, I thought it would just be nice to hear this poem in honor of Black History Month, so. Lift every voice and sing. Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod, bitter the chastening rod, felt in the days when hope unborn had died. Yet with a steady beat, have not our weary feet come to the place for which our fathers sighed. We have come over a way that with tears has been watered. We have come treading our path through the blood of the slaughtered. Out from the gloomy past till now we stand at last, where the white gleam of our bright stars cast. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. Thou who hast by thy might led us into the light. Keep us forever in the path, we pray. Lest our feet stray from the places, our God, where we met thee. Lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world, we forget thee. Shadowed beneath thy hand, may we forever stand, true to our God, true to our native land.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, if you'll, we'll do this a little differently this time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Jason is actually going to put the flag up on the screen. If you'd be so kind as to stop your video, just so we're not seeing everybody's mid-sections. And if you feel compelled to go on mute, that's fine. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and I will be happy to lead us with this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And then one other, a little twist, some of the boards and committees that I've been a part of, definitely in the last week and a half, when we do the roll call, what I'd like to do, this is not a legal requirement at this point, but there has been some advisement from the legal community on our public meetings of letting, as we do the roll call, of letting people know that we are actually, what city we are in, and there is a reason, legal reason for that. So as our clerk calls a roll, and I think you'll call me first as normal, I'll go ahead and then I'll state the city of where I'm currently at for this meeting. So you can just call the roll, ma'am clerk.
Mayor Carey?
Yeah, present here in Walker, Michigan.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Present in Walker.
Commissioner Rapp?
Present in Walker.
Commissioner Glanville?
President in Walker.
Commissioner DeShane?
Present in Walker.
Commissioner Heisinga?
President in Walker.
And Commissioner Grothers?
President in Walker.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so we should, should be good there. So we've got the roll call. Next on the list is the approval of minutes from the January 25th, 2021 meeting. Is there any discussion on set minutes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
Commissioner Heisinga, and who was my support? DeShane?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the minutes? See none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any last time, any public comment on agenda items that we may have this evening? All right, thank you. Next on the list is a proclamation for the Veterans Services that our clerks are going to turn up for the West Michigan Veterans Coalition, Phoenix Mobility Rising, Disability Advocates of Kent County, and Kent County Veterans Services. Is there, we had the presentation at 6:30 from Laura, Valerie, and Captain Ryan. Just for the commission's purposes, is there any other discussion or questions on this? Otherwise, I believe they are asking us for a proclamation in support of the veterans' transportation as they are laying it out for us at the 6:30 meeting. Any discussion? All right, I'll entertain a motion then for approval on the proclamation. I'll make a motion. Motion from Commissioner Rapp. Do we have support? Rapp and Grothers, any other discussion on the proclamation in front of us? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, proclamation is passed. Thank you. Next on the list is the consent agenda, is the expenditures in the amount of $702,373.48. Are there any questions on the bills as they are in our pack? Once, twice. All right, I'll entertain a motion for.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Commissioner DeShane, support from Commissioner Rapp. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. All right, next on our list is the, there's two items. First is Resolution 21-588 on the Commission procedural rules that we tabled from last time. And then related to that is Resolution 21-589 for the Elected Officials Handbook Table, also from the January 25th meeting. So I'll open up for a conversation. Let's start with the procedural rules first. Are there any questions or clarifications, changes needed on this? Otherwise, on this alone, not 589, but 588 procedural rules. If there are no questions or changes, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that resolution. Silence from the group. Okay.
I'll support.
Support was?
Heisinga.
Thank you.
Chase.
All right, we have Resolution 21 dash.
I didn't hear the first motion. Was it Matt? Was it Commissioner Rapp?
Commissioner Rapp, yes, and support from Commissioner Chase.
Thanks.
And Jason, at this point, we're going to have to roll the dice with this, if their names. How many do you have?
Two. The meeting is on YouTube.
Okay. All right, technically, we can let, we probably should let them in. Just a quick finger, please. Ready if we have the same nonsense.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we had Resolution, Resolution 21-588, Commission procedural rules tabled from 1/25/2021. We had approval from Commissioner Rapp and support from Commissioner Chase. Do we have any other discussion on this? Otherwise, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, Resolution 21-588 is passed. And next on the list is Resolution 21-589, Elected Officials Handbook Tabled from 1/25/2021. In the spirit of this, obviously, this is a lot bigger document. Speaking with Shannon a little bit earlier this afternoon, there are some, probably some minor house completed things as far as maybe to apostrophe or things here or there. And Shannon, there is sainthood for you for getting through this over time because there was a lot of work to do with what's now an 11-year-old document and updating it. So thank you to that, to the Personnel Committee for all of that. So while, while it's not 100% perfect, I think we're going to probably get to 99.9% on this and see where we go from there. So that being said, I'll open up for discussion on the handbook as it sits right now.
May I?
Yes, please.
Permission to speak? I don't know. So I, I shared the, some feedback earlier with Shannon and a few folks, with Shannon and Daryl and Frank, to try to get it out of the way a little bit before the meeting. But I think the comments I made at this point are something that maybe we need to look at as a group. So I just wanted to bring up, there are only three, so. Shouldn't take quite as long as last time, but one of the things I noticed first off is that the use of the term community, small C, community capital C, and community at large is inconsistent. Like, we tend to use all three throughout. And then we also use small C city and large capital C city in sometimes what appears to be the same context as community. And so I just feel like we should try to build some consistency in there. And/or if we can add in some terms, like maybe an opening section or something that, you know, it's pretty standard in a document like this. You know, like in our ordinances, we talk about what the terms mean. And so I'm wondering if we need to clarify what the differences between community and city.
So on that one, let's, let's drill into the other community, community at large piece. And I, I think as far as the uppercase lowercase piece, we can take another sweep through that. That won't hold us up tonight with our process on this. But that being said, we can take a, Shannon, as you're, you're able to, and you're taking us on, take that through the book. But do you have an example on the community at large piece versus community? Off the top of your head. If you don't, that's all right, we can.
Are you asking Shannon?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, me? Oh, I'm sorry. I did not highlight them, but I could probably quickly go through and find, I don't think I had one. Because it was pretty, like, it was just kind of throughout. I noticed that we had, like I said, just a variety of terms there. And so I just was curious how that should be standardized.
I don't have a specific answer for you or on this one. Maybe Shannon can then sweep through the book if it's something we could just call attention to on the at-large piece.
Community at large seems to be used in the context of the community outside of the elected officials and other city representatives. Sorry, I'm just, and this is.
Oh, please jump in. I'm dealing with paper copies and I don't want to go through all the paper.
Right, no, I, but I don't disagree with the idea that there should be consistency throughout the document. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Do you have a preference as to which you would prefer, whether it's city or community?
So Steve, is there, I'm assuming you're looking at, it looks like you're looking at maybe some definitions. Is there a clear, like, what would be city then? Is that city elected officials and employees as opposed?
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the uses in the document, not even any definitions. And a lot of times, what I would expect is that a document like this, if it's not using definitions, it would lean on the definitions that are already defined in the lawmaking book. So if we have, like, ordinance definitions, that would be fine as long as we're using those, but I'm not sure we do. I haven't looked through it in that way, at least through that lens, but. I, I don't know. I mean, city seems like it would be the actual city as the entity itself. And community seems like it, it could be used as like the people of the community as a whole. So I'm not, I mean, maybe there is a use for all three, but I think, right, we just, or Commissioner Glanville is right. We just need to be consistent about how we're doing it.
I was just trying to clarify for myself what community meant, so that's why I thought maybe we should have some clarity around that.
Yeah, if anything, I think, I mean, if we were to ad hoc draw up a definition, I would think that it would mean residents, businesses, or anyone with a vested interest in the city would be what I would think for community. But again, that's, I mean, who knows what I'm missing or what I'm, you know.
In my opinion, would be city, but because it's contained within the city limits. But that doesn't mean, community doesn't reach out into other communities or cities or boundaries or whatever.
Sure.
Just like a township or a state or whatever, whatever we're talking about, so. I don't know if that's really a big deal breaker, in my opinion.
Well, and I think, no, it's a fair question because you, I tend to use them interchange them as, whether writing a monthly newsletter or different correspondence. I have a tendency to interchange them because I view them, for the most part, as one of the same. But I think it brings a fair point. If we are discussing city, are we discussing, we're talking about, hey, I'm heading up to the city. And the city might be this building. It might be some, so that, that context. I don't know how many, how many times I'd imagine, it's a lot, probably double digits. I don't think, maybe it's 100 plus, I don't know, but maybe it's something we take a look at. Shannon, we can add that to the piece and just look for clarification of where that makes sense. I mean, is the, I guess for the group, Commissioner Rapp has put out, you view city as city versus community. Do we take this on a case-by-case basis? Or how do we want to do this? This shouldn't be, this won't, I don't want to overcomplicate in that, that, overthinking it, but it's a fair question of how do we, you know, discern what, what, what the meaning of that word that we're trying to use is, so. Record course of action here.
So to, to that, and I don't, again, you're, you're right that I don't think this should overcomplicate it or anything. I don't think this is a hold up the handbook over issue, but what I would say is this is probably just something that if we have someone that goes through deliberately to parse through and be more deliberate and consistent about the way we're, we're using the words, I think that'll be fine. Because it's, I think it's just one of those things that if you're not looking for it and, or if you go through looking for it, it would be something that would be easy to kind of correct. And I just don't think that we've necessarily done that as it was put together, so. I, I don't particularly care which way it's used as long as it's consistent.
I would agree with Commissioner Gilbert. I don't know that it matters that much. You know, like I said, it matters if we think it matters, but if we don't think it matters, then let's just make it consistent, whatever it is, and move on.
Fair point. So maybe Shannon's suggestion was, you have another idea, maybe just in this, just put it in the search bar. Jason, you're doing a great job. Thank you. Folks, we continue to get prodded by people wanting to come and create mayhem in the meeting here, so we're doing good. Shannon, maybe recommendation is throw city and community in the search bar. Make your way through the document if you could. This group trusts you. You're obviously our HR Director for the city. To use just the consistency of the wording, let's find which one makes the most sense. And I think this group, if everybody's fine with that, put that faith into Shannon. After all, you do do the employee handbook here. So we'll give you the, give you the rope here to go ahead and run with it.
Okay, that sounds good.
And Shannon, there's nine of them that are small click case that has the word city in them.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you want me to give you page numbers?
Would you mind emailing them to me?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right, so the second item, and this is maybe not a commission thing, but I noticed under Community Engagement Committee. So that's why I thought this might be more of a discussion for the Community Engagement Committee. All right. So the second item, and this is maybe not a commission thing, but I noticed under community engagement committee. So that's why I thought this might be more of a discussion for the community engagement committee. Um, but when it talks about the description of the community engagements, the committee specifically says residents and corporate entities. Um, and so I was wondering, um, why, like it, we limited it to corporate entities or why we didn't include um, any and all private and public organizations located in or with a vested interest in the city or something like that. Um, so I'm just curious um, if that was just kind of, I don't know, it doesn't matter where it came from. I'm just wondering if we should, uh, broaden that description to include, but I don't want to overstep on the, you know, committee, the community engagement committee. So, um, just something I noticed.
Um, on that one, I think you've got a fair point. I'm looking at page Shannon at page sixteen. I might suggest, um, for the group for, um, um, consideration here, um, where it has promote greater engagement, local activities by residents and organizations, um, residing in the city. Maybe use organizations, not use businesses because we're gonna have nonprofits and there's, so we're gonna have different entities, but taking the corporate citizens out and just calling and, um, we could go by residents, businesses and other organizations, right, residing in the city. I mean, it's a pretty broad umbrella there.
We could do public, private organizations that would cover everybody.
So, um, by residents and public and private organizations residing in the community or city, whatever we decide to pick. Does sound fair to the group?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's actually on. There's two, there's two pieces, Shannon, that on page sixteen, um, under purpose, there's one area. And then the second is the second bullet point. It has corporate entities. And I think if we're just consistent with the wording there. Sweet. Awesome. Thank you. All right, Commissioner.
All right, one more, last one. Um, we had talked about including language that kind of acts as a reminder, guideline related to committee memberships, um, attempting to reflect the entire city. Um, so that membership is balanced, like with the idea that we're bound, trying to balance membership between the wards. And I noticed the personnel committee, um, is the only committee, um, that makes mention of that. Um, so I didn't know, I mean, if I've, my feeling is that we should maybe just make that a standard. Um, and put it at the beginning of the book with the other sort of standard setting piece, like in the introduction, where it says, you know, something along the lines of, um, you know, attempts will be made to include, you know, balanced representation from all three wards or something along those lines, um, in any committee.
So I'm looking right now, I'm on page nine, Shannon, um, under the committee boards heading, and at one point there was some language in this document. That it was the intent, um, intent of the committee appointments, I'm paraphrasing words here, we can word smith this, but the intent was to, um, as much as possible, uh, equitably balance the, uh, appointments between the three wards of the city.
If you look at the community engagement one, it kind of indicates that by saying, uh, the community engagement committee is comprised of elected officials and two representatives from each ward when necessary, two or more, more than two representatives from a single ward may be selected to fill openings on the committee. So maybe be more consistent like that throughout them, maybe.
So on page sixteen.
Yeah, I, I think Commissioner Glanville is probably right, but throwing some intent language up at the top would be the easiest way to just kind of broadly say, um, as much as we can, that, that should be a directive that we try to, try to use.
Yeah, that's what I was saying is we could take that wording that's in the community engagement one, because that kind of overcast what we were thinking for every ward, but then also brings in that statement that if we can't find it, that we still do need to fill these vacant, uh, spots from the committee.
The personnel committee has it too, pretty succinctly. It just says the commission will attempt to appoint members in a manner so there is balanced representation among the city wards. So maybe Shannon, between personnel and community engagement, you can come up with something fancy.
And again, the one, the one thing I would caution is that we don't want to tie our hands so that if, if we find someone that's got like just that right skill set that we can't operate around that, but, but that should be the intent, um, as possible.
I can add that language to page nine.
And that was all I had this time around.
We're good. Hey, this is, think about this for a minute. Where were we all at ten years ago? Our lives, our worlds, um, have all changed. Um, actually eleven years, I'm sorry. Um, you know, when you really taken consideration, all that's gone on, uh, in that time. So, um, this has been a, a bit of an undertaking. We'll take this back up in October. Um, this will be a lot smoother this time around and, uh, um, I appreciate again all the work. Um, Shannon, you've done a tremendous amount of lifting on this from the start. Um, our personnel committee, um, you know, getting their, uh, um, their teeth into this as well. And, um, you know, I, I, I think for all of us, um, the questions, there is no silly question, no dumb question. These are questions that we all have. We want to get this right, not just for us, but those coming behind us. So I applaud the, uh, the involvement that, uh, um, and interest that everybody has in it. So thank you. Um, great questions, Commissioner Glanville. I think we're, uh, uh, almost here at the, the finish line with this. And then, um, so next up then, um, from that, Shannon, you'll make those changes. Um, what we'd like to do, and I know we live in an electronic world a bit, but I think it will be nice on the go forward of having, um, um, that option of having a professionally bound or nicely bound, um, handbook, um, that would be a handout like you get on orientation, you know, your first date, your new place. Um, these will be provided to us, um, uh, when we have the updates. And so Shannon's gonna help lead that for us and, uh, get these. So we have a living, breathing document with us. And then somebody new coming in as well, whenever that may be, that we're able to hand that to them and they are able to get started off on the right foot. Cool. All right. So with all the changes we have, um, actually, there's only a few, um, resolution twenty-one dash five eight nine is on the table. This is for the elected officials handbook. Uh, this is tabled from January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Um, any other discussion on this, otherwise entertaining motion for approval on that? I'll make a motion. All right, motion, Commissioner Rapp. Support, uh, Commissioner Chase. I think Chase. All right. Any other discussion on resolution twenty-one dash five eight nine? One, once, going twice. All right. Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Rapp, support from Chase, um, to approve resolution twenty-one dash five eight nine of the elected officials handbook. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Sweet. Good stuff. All right, next on the list, um, that's hard to do. I mean, there's a lot of movie parks in there, so it's a good, good journey to take together. Resolution twenty-one dash five ninety is to accept the twenty fifteen delinquent personal property tax list and authorize signature of waiver and consent to strike petition. Uh, Daryl covered this, uh, at the end of our six thirty committee, the whole meeting. Is there any other question on this? Otherwise, entertaining motion for approval of resolution twenty-one dash five ninety.
Go moved.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Groders and Glanville for support. Um, so we have resolution twenty-one dash five ninety, um, has a motion for approval from Commissioner Groder, support from Commissioner Glanville. Is there any other discussion on twenty-one dash five ninety? Otherwise, I'll ask all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Um, twenty-one five ninety is passed. Um, next on the list, we also, Frank covered resolution twenty-one dash five ninety-one. Consumers Energy Lighting Contract Amendment for Kenny and Metal Springs at the entrance coming in there, um, to replace a crossroad light fixture, uh, with one of the new LED Cobra headlights. So is there any other discussion on this? Otherwise, entertaining motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
It's your neighborhood. I would expect that.
Support. Thanks, Carol.
Who's the support? Commissioner Glanville? Got it. Right. Second ward rules. There we go. All right. Um, we have a resolution of twenty-one dash five nine one. Uh, motion by Commissioner James, support by Commissioner Glanville. Is there any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are passed on five ninety-one. Travis, finally. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna tee you up, brother here. Um, this is been around a little while. This is, I, I, I think how many times I've, I've walked even, um, as, as a commissioner, had walked back to ask questions about, um, different things on about how much filter, um, you know, wasn't so much trees, but maybe roads, curves and gutter, all these different things. And, um, you know, Travis had in his cover memo, um, to these ordinances, he talked about major updates and he definitely was not kidding. Uh, this is significant. I know this is gonna make it much easier, um, not just externally for our contractors in, uh, uh, construction taking place in the city, but then also internally for our city staff. Um, this will be in one clean spot. Um, and, uh, just as I turn it over to Travis, thank you to the ordinance committee. I know this was a painstaking process. Travis, you led the charge, particularly through COVID. Uh, Scott's had some input on this. I can go right down the list of everybody, but, um, this is, this is big. Um, it may not seem like it, but this is a big darn thing. So anyway, Travis, I think you've got a little presentation you're gonna share. So if I could ask Jason to share, allow Travis to present.
Yeah, I'll do that. Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I'll get to my slides here in a second. I just want to point out, we got Scott Connors and Gary Postman on the call too. They were definitely integral in, uh, helping us make this, this major update. So with that being said, I will share my screen and, uh, as long as I pick the right one here, should work. There, oops, what is going on with that? Okay, can everyone see this?
Yep.
Like it looks like a cover page. And there's my cover page.
Yeah.
So yeah, so today we're talking about the City of Walker Construction Standards for Public Right-of-Way and Easements. And I've just got about five or six slides here. It's the same five or six slides that I shared with the ordinance committee, um, just to kind of talk us through this process from a high level. Um, and so the history of what we're talking about here. So back in nineteen seventy-seven, when I was negative one years old, the City of Walker passed an ordinance that governed, um, how we would do work within the road right of way. Um, and it basically said, go get a permit. And ironically, you got the permit through the building services department. Um, and that's largely how things were done. Um, until nineteen ninety-one, there was a major update where we wrote down a bunch of, uh, our rules, our first attempt at writing down our rules on how to work within the highway and, uh, for highway permits and utility line permits. Um, and this is the document that we've been working off of through today with updates that have gone on throughout the years that I'll touch on here in a second. And then what I'm here to talk about, um, today is the construction standards document. So you can see, I think, uh, Shannon was just talking about updating a document that's eleven years old. Uh, today, now we're gonna talk about updating a document that's thirty years old. Um, so what changed between three iterations technically? So the ordinance, as we said in nineteen seventy-seven, was only three pages long and it basically said, go get a permit and we'll review on what you submit with the permit. Uh, and that's how we'll govern and watch our construction and our right of way. In nineteen ninety-one, we started writing down specific rules, um, really focused on, you can even see the terminology. We called them highway permits and utility line permits. Um, our terminology largely mimicked that of the road commissions in the area. And then we also, so we had eleven pages of text, and then we had fourteen pages of, uh, construction drawings that were our standards. And then in twenty twenty-one, um, what's before you today, uh, you can see that this is all kind of built on each, our eleven pages have turned to twenty-five pages and our fourteen drawings have turned to thirty-one drawings. So we've added more information into the document than what was previously there thirty years ago, as you would expect. So what changed organizationally? Well, the nice thing about the ordinance in nineteen seventy-seven is that it was a single source. Um, and in nineteen ninety-one, the highway rules and regulations document, or which we call the blue book, if you happen to hear me refer to it as that, it's because it has a blue cover on it. Um, we went away from this single source. It started out that it referenced the single source ordinance from nineteen seventy-seven. And then we added those text and drawings that we talked about, the rules and regulations. And then there were other ordinances that were enacted throughout the years that the document then referenced. And there are other written policies that were enacted throughout the years of the document referenced. And then there were these kind of, I call them oral policies, just ways that we've traditionally done business. Um, we've had a lot of people here, a lot of staff that have a lot of longevity. Um, and those just kind of became oral traditions, oral policies over the years. So what are we going to in twenty twenty-one? We're kind of coming back to this single source document, but it's comprehensive. It's gonna fold in all of the information from the years prior, plus advancements. Um, it's gonna, we're gonna reference all those other ordinances straight in the document, all of the written policies, all of the oral policies. So there's one single source that when a contractor is looking for what are the requirements, or a design engineer is looking for what are the requirements for, for doing construction of the road right of way or a public utility easement, um, they have a comprehensive, single-source document. So why did this take so long? Took us thirty years. Uh, well, you can see just one year after our blue book was around, that's a old binder I have, um, from Scott, I think back when you might have been working for Warren Brujink. Um, that star already had notes on things that we could do to update our document from nineteen ninety-one. Uh, and as I understand it, a couple of efforts were underway to try to make updates. Um, a large one was done in two thousand two when we had a engineering intern, uh, that came in and tried to, to organize all of the updates by looking at what is Grand Rapids doing, Wyoming, Granville, Kent County, all, all the neighboring jurisdictions. What are their standards and what are we missing in ours? And, uh, you know, what could, what could we do? Um, all of that predates me. I come on the scene about two thousand six and by two thousand eight, get my feet under me a little bit, and I take a stab at updating these documents. And we have multiple meetings with our consulting engineers, our public works department, um, and we start drafting up these changes. Two thousand nine, we have all the changes drafted up and we review it again and we get more comments. It can, the document continues to grow. And then we enter what I call the hot potato years where, um, more and more comments kind of keep coming in. Um, I don't really want to finish it off. It's getting really difficult. I try to pass it off to Scott. He passes it back to me and we start playing hot potato with this thing. We enter the year twenty nineteen where Scott gets serious and he says, Travis, we gotta get this done. We're gonna hire you an intern for the summer and he's gonna help you, you know, organize all of this information and you're gonna work with him and we're gonna try to wrap this up. So that's Zach, our intern from the summer of twenty nineteen. Zach, as you can see in the background, went to school at Texas A&amp;M. Um, his parents happened to live in Hudsonville. So, uh, that's how we got him here for a summer. He was a huge help in helping us organizing, organizing all of these various iterations and trying to make sure that we, we weren't missing comments, um, and, and kind of pushing us forward. When he left, we had a nice document uh, to once again do a review on. And that brought us to twenty twenty, Microsoft Teams, the coronavirus, um, when things kind of, uh, when construction abruptly kind of shut down at the end of March. Um, that's when Scott, Gary and I, um, picked up that document, really dusted it off and got serious about wrapping it up. Um, and we had lots of Microsoft Teams virtual meetings, um, just like the one that we're in right now. And we ultimately came to, uh, today. So how do we cross the finish line from ninety-one to two thousand twenty-one? So there are four ordinance updates and, um, just a quick side note here, I think in my, in my cover memo, I might have referenced these as ordinance update resolutions. Um, that's, I think it's an error. They're really just straight up ordinance updates. Um, to me, they look like resolutions because it's Um to me, they look like resolutions because it's, they're, they're not in the redline format. They're in the finalized format. Um so in your packet, uh they are there. Now, the, the table of contents in the packet would be for a standalone PDF. Um since uh, since your packet started on, my packet started on page ninety. Um you're gonna find these ordinance update resolutions on page one sixty-four of today's commission packet. Um and you can see that there's, there's four different sections of the ordinances. Uh chapter seventy is the public works permitting uh ordinance section eighty-two, uh those sections right there, the truck routes. Um section seventy-four is street trees and section eighteen thirty-two is building permits requiring driveway permits. Basically, what we're doing with all of these ordinance updates is we're kind of taking out all of the technical requirements out of the ordinance updates and, and pointing right towards the uh, the book. Um so the orange is still stand there and they say, uh you know, hey, but for the technical uh requirements, reference the book. And then um so that, so just to back up a second, today we'll be doing the first reading of the ordinances. And then in two weeks, we do the second reading and acceptance and assuming all four of those pass. Um on February twenty-second, we would also do a resolution to adopt the construction standards. Um we won't have to do a resolution every single time we make updates to it, just when we make major updates to it, um which would probably be every few years going forward. Um but we wanted to have that uh kind of in place since this is definitely a, a major update. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and come back here. I had to turn my, I was just looking at my own slides, so hopefully you could see me during that. Um so that is a high level overview of what we've uh done. And I think one last uh kind of side note to bring up is uh I think um Steve and Marvin, you were on the ordinance committee and I think Melanie was too. Um these are the exact same ordinances that we brought to the ordinance committee. There was one minor modification to the chapter seventy ordinance as I was doing one last proof reading. I found that we had accidentally left a section on uh when you submit plans to the DPW, they must have X, Y and Z requirements. Those were reiterative with what we have and the construction standards document. So I checked with the city attorney and they said, yeah, strike it out. We don't wanna be reiterative when we don't need to be. So that change has been done. Um I also tried to find as many spelling errors in the document as possible. And um I'm sure some still remain, but I have read this ninety-one page thing so many times. And that's it.
Well done. Well, well done. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make some quick ones, Mr. Mayor, if I can. Um I just wanna commend the work on this. I, I think it's an outstanding update and I, you know, I, I read a lot of this type of stuff at my day job and uh I, I gotta say, it makes all the sense in the world. This is something we do at the state level all the time where um instead of plugging these standards into state law where it's cumbersome to change, it's costly, it takes a lot of manpower. Um moving it into a separate rules and regulations that's administered by the department that is more nimble and we can adjust as needed, you know, making changes to things like construction materials is really easy in a rules and regs. If there's some breaking new type of material that we can approve in buildings, but uh doing so in our ordinance or state statute or wherever it is, uh is more cumbersome, it's costly. And uh I think this, this is a much needed update and credit to the uh engineering team and public works for doing it. Um I know that when they, when they came to ordinance, my only question was on the bond assurance, I think, so. Um really, really good stuff. Um and really excited to see it move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments, questions? All right, so Trav, our word, I'll read out loud the ordinances. Um I wanna make sure that this is probably clerk um procedural issue. I believe we're able to do, if I read all four of these with one resolution to approve all of them, correct?
You mean one motion, right?
Yes.
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 That would be fine.
Okay, so we have at hand here ordinance twenty-one dash six five six. First reading to amend chapter seventy, uh articles one and two of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance twenty-one dash six five seven, first reading to amend chapter eighty-two. Articles nine, sections eighty-two dash two zero three, eighty-two dash two zero five of the Code of Ordinances. Uh ordinance twenty-one dash six five eight, first reading to amend chapter seventy-four. Articles five, section seventy-four, ninety point one of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance twenty-one dash six five nine, first reading to amend chapter eighteen, article two, section eighteen dash thirty-two of the Code of Ordinances. Um is there any other discussion on any four of these? And again, uh Travis had mentioned these in his cover um letters, well, it's just verbally seventy is the public works permits. Um eighty-two is the truck routes, seventy-four is street trees and eighteen is building and driveway permits. So is there any other discussions or questions for Travis? Otherwise, entertaining motion for approval on these.
Make motion.
I'll second.
Uh Commissioner Gilbert and support was?
Thanks.
Thank you. Um any other discussion on these three or, or I'm sorry, these four ordinances? Twenty-one dash six five six, twenty-one dash six five seven, twenty-one dash six five eight and ordinance twenty-one dash six five nine. Any other discussion on these? Otherwise, so entertaining or um we'll ask for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, we are passed and Travis will be back in two weeks. I think we'll be good with these though. Well done. Awesome, awesome job.
Thanks Scott and Gary.
Gary Postman's on there. He's probably not paying attention, but I'm gonna hear about this tomorrow. I forgot to mention a shout out to him, so I'll take my lumps in the morning. Oh, here we go. Well, Gary's gotta stay on now because I'm gonna be mentioning him down here in a little while, so.
I'll say thanks.
Up today, I, I was nice to Scott. I wasn't nice to Gary, so I'll take my lumps tomorrow. All right.
All good.
Good stuff. Um all right, um please tell me, Jason, we have nobody in the waiting room for public comment.
We do not.
Thank you. All right. Folks, if you've not experienced Zoom bombing, that's twice in a week for yours truly and uh they're a pain in the backside, so. Uh soon as we can be back in person safely, we will be. Um all right, um uh city managers, a quick double check with you. Um any other comments from you?
Uh just one comment for me. Thank you for your action on both the handbook and the highway rules and regs. Two long-term projects that our staff has been working on and I don't think can be happier to be completed with these two. So thanks for your action tonight on both of those items.
Awesome. Good, thank you. And then uh Gary, while you're on as well, any uh, anything for the commission uh highlights or whatever from the weekend other than just another super to fill job?
Well, we got a good team, great team to do it and uh they did a great job this weekend, so. Yeah, winner returned with a vengeance, so but I'll pass on the, the kudos from you guys. Appreciate it. And I just wanna say thanks Travis for getting this project done. It has been a long project, but it's appreciated, so.
Good stuff. Good, thank you. And Scott, while you're on this late too, is there anything that uh um you had for the group by chance?
Oh, not really. Um we got bids in Friday uh through M dot for the Kenny job. And those came in very favorably, so still waiting to see the final numbers, but um below budget. Um I think the contractor was Anlon who um does, does good work, hasn't done a lot of work here, but uh we'll get more details probably over the next three, four weeks to share that with you and we'll work with Dan on the budget adjustments.
Good, thank you. All right, um man of clerk, before I drop to the commissioners, anything?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right, uh starting the first ward, um Commissioner Rapp, you're right next to Melanie Gilbert.
Yeah, probably first, so Gary can lead. Um hats off to the DPW. Um as most of you know, I get across from Kent, Ottawa, different municipalities, Grand Rapids, Wyoming, Kentwood, wherever it may be and um nothing to, against any of those other municipalities, but they do not do near as good of a job as what the city of Walker does. And if um uh anybody thinks that that's not important, not necessarily the commissioner or whoever, they're sadly mistaken because it does affect public safety, so um uh seconds and minutes save lives obviously. And when the roads are, are icy, it's bad. And if people say that it couldn't be um fixed, they're wrong. Because I woke up, I don't remember if it was Saturday or Sunday morning. Um left home, drove by, oh, the roads are great. Three Mile was dry. Get to Ottawa County, along with Grand Rapids and other communities on my way, and they're horrible. And I would think um Gary, you'd be able to probably attest to this. Three Mile, I think, uh is very similar to Baldwin um and traffic related. And actually Baldwin's probably busier, to be quite honest with you. And it was probably horrible. I mean, you couldn't even hardly drive it. So hats off to the City of Walker uh DPW for that. Um a lot of uh communities, they didn't even get into the flats and get a plow over the weekend until Monday or maybe even that till tomorrow even. Um so strong work for all of them. Um so Gary, there you go. Pass that on to them. Um so also, I'd like to kind of on this, little bit on the same note, I got a uh kind of a complaint on an abandoned vehicle or a couple of abandoned vehicles that affected snowplow removal and mailboxes and driveways and whatever. And uh through the um uh the right connections, we got ahold of uh Officer Sewak and Officer Heisinger. They were able to fix both of those in a prompt and uh timely manner, uh both by uh putting the forty-eight hour sticker on, giving the uh vehicle plenty of time to get out of there and they did not do that. So they impounded the vehicle, submitted the appropriate uh measures to get that taken care of. So hats off to uh police department, especially Officer uh Heisinger and Sewak. Um kind of wrapping that up on the same note, um I know we're beating the social media with it and I don't know if it's Nicole necessarily that does it or if it's um the police department and the fire department take care of their own or not.
They do their own.
They do their own, but um uh just to reiterate that, uh keeping our sidewalks clear for uh first responders and addresses clear, um so we can see them along with uh um keeping our fire hydrants clear, um those are all important things. So hats off to all of those and just kind of some general safety things, just to kind of keep in mind for people. Um not only in the city of Walker, but throughout the, the other communities that uh are around. So I don't think I have anything else other than that.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Gilbert?
Yeah, um not too much for me. We had a planning commission meeting and uh we approved a project, another, another project on Northridge. Um this one was the uh corner of Bristol and Northridge Drive. So it's a pretty sensitive site just because there are some neighbors nearby, but I think we took appropriate precautions and uh got the project approved. Um only other thing, Rapid Board, we uh, we did get the CEO's contract approved, so uh that will be starting with us in March, I believe, Gary, is that correct?
Correct.
Yep, um we had our board retreat as well, uh well, half of it. And we had a good discussion on the preferred service alternative, so that is the uh map. Some of you been floating around with uh updates to the routes and uh Walker getting on-demand service. Again, I've been beating the drum of uh making sure we have metric controls to uh make sure we're getting value-added service in Walker. Um but more to come on that. We'll uh keep moving through those steps and things will keep developing in Walker. Uh but ever, if anyone has any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. That's it for me.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Glanville?
Um yeah, just to echo everybody, um Gary, thanks to the DPW for a great job. It seems like it always snows on a holiday or weekend, so not only to the, the staff that you have, but to their families as well for um you know, kind of giving them up on, on the big game and all that stuff, so um as Commissioner Rapp stated this morning, driving into work, I don't have too far to go, but I knew when I left Walker, and then I said, why am I not working from home today? So uh work from home for tomorrow. Um so there's that, thanks. Um I had a good conversation with um Frank and the mayor um recently regarding um some, the future of the Parks and Rec Committee, so excited about that. Um we're gonna be doing some really good stuff that's going to, I think um it's really gonna be shifting the committee, the commu- committee to more of a community focus. Um where previously it was really more around um the lease that we had with Kenowa. So um look, look for more information to be coming on that very soon. Um and then the last thing I wanted to mention was something that I had emailed um the group and quite if I included quite a few people in this um related to the ban the box um question on our, on our um applications. I noticed it on the volunteer applications for those who don't know what I'm talking about. Um there's on our volunteer applications, we have a checkbox for people to, well, we did have a checkbox for people to indicate if they had um been convicted of a felony in the past, and that is a movement um to re, to remove that box increases inclusivity and diversity. Um it's a lot of good things for us um and for folks trying to get um you know, returning citizens to get re-engaged with the community. Um and in fact, Michigan is a ban the box state. Governor Snyder signed a um not clear to me if it's a law proclamation, but we practice um not asking those questions as a state on job applications um in the public sector. So I had asked if we could have that removed from our volunteer applications and then also review that as part of our general HR policy. And I just wanted to see, and maybe Darryl, you have the answer for this, um where that ended up or, or what's going on with that.
Uh yeah, we're, Shannon is still doing some research on that because I don't, I don't think it's a, it's not a state law that that's required that we ban that. It's optional. And in some of our positions, that is an important factor depending on the position that we are hiring. Uh whether it may be a police officer position or some of those other positions. So, so we're reviewing that on the other, on the applications. Not sure where that stands for the uh boards and committees, but Sarah, Sarah has a comment on that.
So my comment is that um I did receive Carol's email and we thought it'd be best to take it off for now if we decide to add it back on, we can. So it um has been taken off the current committee application, so nothing to do with police or fire or hiring somebody, more on the committee level.
I, Madam Clerk, I, I probably would ask that we have that back on and it probably should be a personnel committee while we're doing um work because we, we have a potential, I had a passing conversation in the hallway, Darryl, about it. Um one of the things is uh is we promote committee involvement. Um quite often that committee involvement turns into, uh could turn into an appointed city commissioner spot. And I believe that the public has a right to know um if uh we are interviewing somebody for a spot, if that background is actually there. Um if they're running for office, obviously they're on their own and then general public's gonna find that anyway. But I, I'd like to have that back on until, um because it is not state law, we probably should not make that decision on our own. That should be left on there until we have legal determination. If we could, at least.
So can, can I ask what um legal determination, um what entails legal determination or how that's gonna move forward?
Well, I, what I'd like to do is, is you know, as Darryl mentioned, let Shannon do the due diligence piece, bring it back. Um have personnel vetted if it's appropriate, but we can have further conversation. Um when it comes to things like that, we really, I wanna be cautioned that we follow um state law, local ordinances where appropriate. Um and right now with it not being that, I know that that could be a decision we make, but what liability is there? There is that counter effect. Whenever you make a decision, there's a counter effect to that. And um I don't want to have to debate the, the whole premise of it. There is merit to the discussion, totally get that. But also too, I think there's a obligation we have to have to make sure that we, um if we're appointing somebody that's a potential um city commissioner, that that it actually is disclosed.
Right, and that's the point of the ban the box is that um you're letting people in at an entry level position and as they move through the organization, if and when there's a need to know more about their background, you can get into that, but in the meantime, it removes the barrier for some um and gives an opportunity to get reinvested in their communities. So I, I realize this is maybe not the time for this. It's not on our agenda.
No, it's a group discussion. That's a very, it's a great time, so we can all talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would love to hear other input on this. I did send, and I don't know how many people had a chance to read um the documentation that I sent. Um and if you haven't, I would invite. the documentation that I sent. And if you haven't, I would invite you to take a look at that because I said it's, it's a way to open up our communities to returning citizens so that they have an opportunity, like I said, to get re-engaged and it lowers recidivism and, you know, all these other issues, so.
I don't know. I mean, it, it's a discussion that has merit and I think a lot of that discussion is happening right now around criminal justice reform and, and other similar issues. My understanding of the directive from the governor, the former governor was that it was, it, it barred it from the initial application, but it didn't remove it entirely from the process. So later in the hiring process, that could be visited as a part of it, but it removed it from the initial application.
Right.
So I, and, and not that that is here or there on the issue, but it's just, I guess, something that may be worth noting that I guess the circumstance around, and I don't know too much about it. I remember having the discussion a little bit, but it, I mean, it's something that probably warrants a longer discussion and certainly visiting the issue. Especially with the shifting culture towards more and more of that type of action.
And I
I agree, Steve.
Oh, but I think if, if we could, Shannon's obviously off, but if we could, we may be back right here, back here, Commissioner Glanville, and we may end up taking it off, but I want to make sure that we've gone through that legal vetting process and at some point in time we do have that right as a, as a public body to be able to ask, and as Commissioner Gilbert just said, it might not be in that first, it might be that second one. One we're having before that committee appointment might be made. Definitely police and fires, that, that's a whole different conversation, but I think as committees, somewhere along the way, I would feel more comfortable if I'm putting my name on it. I need to understand who I'm appointing to this commission for approval. And have to have that confidence that I'm not going to promote a applicant forward that has the potential of no matter the background, it could be something that we can't possibly fathom what that background is, that it has the potential to embarrass the city and call attention to us. And that's that, that may be, that's taken it to that extreme, but we have to plan for those things. That's why we go through that legal vetting process.
And I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that, but I just feel like, I mean, that I guess the point of having served a sentence is that you have paid for your crime and to continue to be judged and cut off from something as simple as being like on a community engagement committee. You know, that, I don't, I have, I find that problematic. And I understand that there are areas within the city where we do need to be aware, and I'm sure police and fire has a whole different, even hiring system. I mean, as an educator, I have been fingerprinted for the last thirty years. I get the importance of those things for public safety in the, in the proper context. I just, like I said, I think I would ask that we take a real close look at this and I'm glad you're having Shannon look into the legalities and the, you know, where we stand with state and, and local ordinances on this.
And I think maybe a takeaway then for the group is if we, as she does the due diligence, comes back with the legal opinion recommendation. Maybe ask her or Daryl to share that with the other group then at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Definitely open to the discussion. I just want to make sure that we do it right. And maybe we end up again, it's off there, but I think it's I don't want to put the cart before the horse there. Cool.
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else on that one?
And that closes my comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner DeShane?
I want to just tell Travis and Scott, thanks for their due diligence on manuals and booklets. I know that that's not a fun task and those can be very tedious, as well as Shannon, her help on updating the elected officials handbook. We know that they're living documents, so there's something that's always going to have to be maintained and updated and greatly appreciated. Lots of work goes into it. It's not one of those tasks that you, you kind of don't want to look people in the eye when they're handing out that task, but thanks for doing it. Because it, it really, really helps us as a commission to be able to use that appropriately. And we need it to be lifetime, so we understand exactly what we're looking at. I love the social media with cleaning the hydrants. I thought that was really a great out-of-the-box idea. I, I just, I, I just thought that was really, really neat. And then my other comment is to Gary, thank you so much. You did a great job with plowing you and your team, the DPW. They did a great job with keeping the roads clear and I always get a lot of feedback from neighbors and residents saying, wow, they, they just were really on it because they may have traveled to Genesee or traveled throughout Grand Rapids and they're like, wow, those roads, you know, sometimes, sometimes we do so good that people venture out and then they get themselves in a little bit of trouble. So, you know, but I think I'd rather have it be that kind of a problem, but. And then my last comment is, we had a finance committee meeting this morning and again, Dan DeVries and Daryl, thank you so much. The way you walk us through these, these documents are, are really helpful for us to see, see and plan for the betterment of Walker. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Last but not least, the third ward, Commissioner Chase.
No comments from me.
Commissioner Groers?
Nothing other than thank you. As, as has already been said to our great road people that are keeping us, keeping us on the road. I really appreciate it.
Love it. Good stuff. All right, last but not least, just two quick items. Years of service, we normally, this time of year, we celebrate the, have people sitting out here in the chairs recognize them for their five-year increments. Of years of service and have a small gift of recognition and gratitude for that. I've reached out to all but one and had a live conversation with all but one on the list of people from this year. Shannon actually has the bags in her office with those, so we'll make sure to get those to the committees when they're out, but just another process that we're making sure we're not letting fall through the cracks here. And then last but not least, I'll bring us home on Jason Rotten. Thank you. We talked last week right after we got off the Metro Council meeting and said, dude, you're not going to believe what just happened to us. And it happened and now I got it. If anything happens, I got this. And I might have bugged him two or three times today about it. Hey, you ready? You good? And lo and behold, it happens and we took care of it. So that's the value of having someone in that position, but also the accessibility and the skill set that he has is just super, super helpful for us to have a productive and effective meeting. We probably, definitely the February twenty-second will be remote, but at that, you know, a couple of weeks from now, let's have a discussion, see what March looks like and where we want to go with this. If we want to continue with the Zoom or go into come back to a live, a socially distant meeting in here, that will be a group decision, so we'll have that conversation on the twenty-second and then see where we go for early March and kind of go from there. So that'll be in set. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I'll make a motion. Commissioner Gilbert, see you back there. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, everyone. Great discussion. Have a good night.
Night.